We are here on Wednesday, July 22 for the work session for the Board of Commissioners. During the, the work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion. But there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to, are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. So we will start with Board Communications and today I'm going to start, if you don't mind. I have a couple reminders. One is the, we are working towards doing an evaluation of our county manager and it's been requested that each of the Commissioners give us some input and, and send that to Kelly. So if you haven't done that yet, I hope that you will do that soon. We'd like to have that in by Friday. And then I think today we also, Teresa probably has talked to all of you about getting an appointment with Terry next week for the strategic plan. I know I haven't had a chance to do that yet, but I do encourage all of you to get your time set aside and do the homework that Terry has requested us to do for that. And then there's, there's, there's a letter from AOC regarding workplace protections with OSHA. If you haven't had a chance to, to look at that, you might want to look at that. And what they're requesting is that if you're interested in signing onto that, to sign, to send an electronic signature. And I think Teresa can help you with that. So I believe that's all I have for right now. Seems like it's been a busy day, but, so let's go on to his next. Who else would like to check in today? No, no other Commissioners would like to check in?
Hi.
Okay, hi, Commissioner Thompson. Go ahead, did you have some comments or did you just wait?
I don't know why that's.
Seems to be a lot of reverb, isn't there?
Well, and, and we're not even singing yet. So I have personal updates this week. I have a dog who had emergency surgery who is now post-operative. And when she saw those two young deer in the yard, she thought she should give chase, but she was happy that I stopped her soon afterward. I have three family members with birthdays this week. My beloved husband, my beloved sister, and my beloved son all have birthdays this week. And next week, Ralph Wyatt retires after 28 and a half years as county manager, sorry, County Administrative Officer in Lynn County. And, you know, big changes. So thank you, Madam Chair, that's my update.
Well, thank you and congratulations. Sounds like there's a lot of milestones in your family this week. So who else would like, anyone else like to say howdy? Okay, let's move on then to, to discuss the formal agenda. Understand, Commissioner Neveker, you have a question about that?
Yes, I would like to remove from the consent calendar the Arts Council new mission statement and remand that back to the Arts Council for further review.
Okay. I don't see a problem with that. And, and so when we have our regular meeting, we will ask you again to, if you have a question, isn't that, isn't that correct? Joanna, that's how we do it? We have to do it during a formal meeting?
Yes, because you're going to be approving the agenda and so just remove it from the agenda approval. Or you can, when you approve the consent calendar, you can actually just remove it from the consent calendar and go, go through that process.
So she could make a motion and ask that it be removed and then we can second it, right?
Yes, yes.
All right. Any, any other comments about the agenda today? Okay, so why don't we move right on to the Public Health update? Who will be Assistant County Manager, Ms. Steele, do you have a question? You just, I thought your hand went up. Okay. I'm seeing things. Okay, who will, who will give the staff report for the Health Department?
Doctor, Doctor McNichol is on the, is on the line, so. Hear me?
Yes, thank you.
There I am. Okay, good, hear me, all right. Good afternoon, everybody. This is Mike McNichol, Public Health Director. Yeah, so right now, the number of cases that are currently, total cases are at 68 as of today. We've had a number of new cases this week. And last week, it's, we have confirmed that we have community spread of COVID, which is not a surprise, it's pretty much everywhere now. The Health Department also knows that one of those cases is from De Yang Fish Processing. We worked with them again over the last two days. We're going to have a, a testing event through the drive-through testing at the Health Service Waste Facility on Thursday starting at 9:00 AM. We anticipate it takes about four hours, it's about 160, maybe a little more, folks need to be tested. And De Yang has been great to work with, like our experience with Bornsteins and other ones, other than Pacific Seafood. It's been a, it's been a very pleasant working experience with them. We're also engaged with Clatsop Community College, working with their reopening plan. And I'm on the, the five school districts we're meeting weekly to discuss their reopening plans. We're basically in an advocacy and, or just doing advocacy and technical assistance. It is not a plan that we are going to approve, because there is no plan that we would actually approve. This is mostly giving them technical assistance for their decision whether or not they should open. So that's our role. They have to have something in by August 15th to the Oregon Department of Education. Other than that, we are continuing to do contact tracing for all the folks who have not recovered. And that's getting down, just leaning down as we move on here. We still have, we have had no admissions specifically for COVID, so our hospital capacity is still good. Our PBE availability is still good, so we're crossing our fingers to hope that we don't have a major event here. And so that's, that's our current update. I'll take some questions if you have any.
All right, thank you, Dr. McNichol. Who, does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. McNichol, every time I'm in a meeting with Senator Johnson, she chides all the Commissioners in the room pointedly to say that after her meeting with hospital folks, she's uncertain that they have adequate supplies. And so I'm just the conduit of this information. Is she talking about us or do we have problems in Clatsop County in this regard?
You know, we're in constant communication with, with our two hospital systems and they have reported that they have adequate PBE. But again, I think that when you look at it statewide, you have serious hotspots like in Yumatoa County and other places on the East Coast and, or on the eastern side of the state. They may be having those issues, but right now in Clatsop County, the two hospital systems have reported that we have adequate PBE.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Neveker?
What's the turnaround time for testing and how, how accurate are these tests?
Are you talking about De Yang specifically?
I'm sorry?
Just in general? Are you talking about the ones we're going to do for the De Yang fish processing or testing in general?
The testing that we do in this county or do we have more than one?
Yeah, we have more than one testing. You know, CMH Urgent Cares have a rapid testing, which is a 24-hour test. We are having some, we have used Quest and LabCorp and the Public Health Laboratory for our testing. It's just public health laboratory testing like we've done for our outbreaks, including De Yangs, which we'll be doing tomorrow. We have 24-hour turnaround time, so that's great. For Quest and LabCorp, we've noticed seven to 10-day delays in getting our test results back.
Do you know why it's so long?
It's, it's the quantity of testing they're doing. They've ramped up just in the last two weeks. For example, InterPath, which is another provider that is in the southwest Washington area, they went from 400 tests a day to 800 tests a day. And so their timeliness has gone from two days to five. And I think Quest and LabCorp, which was doing several thousand a day, that has multiplied significantly. And so their turnaround time has just slowed down due to the vast quantity of testing coming in.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, how, how were the, the ones that you said have a 24-hour turnaround, how accurate are those?
Yeah, so your accuracy is good enough that if you're having elective surgery, that they'll accept the results. There is some question about false negatives. But right now, you know, if you have a testing, if we have a testing problem and you get that test result and you have a false positive and you have symptoms, we'll still consider you a presumptive case and so we still recommend quarantine.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other Commissioner with a question? Okay, thank you very much, Dr. McNichol, and thank you for all your continued hard work.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the Clatsop County Facilities reopening plan. We have about 10 minutes for that. Who would like to give that staff report?
That's me.
Thank you.
No problem. So as you're all aware, beginning March 13th, Clatsop County's way that we do business, not just for the county as an entity, but the county as a whole, really changed in regards to the impact of COVID. And so while as a local government, we're considered an essential service, we still chose to take precautions and shut the buildings down. We were still and still continue to provide services, vital services to the public. But we were also just trying to take precautions to get things in place in order to protect our valued employees as well as to protect the citizens at large. Some of the things that we did was we implemented a COVID policy. And Dawn had taken that to you as a board to just kind of let you know what, what we were doing to provide support to our employees. And we also took a variety of different measures depending on the department and depending on what they were able to implement. Some staff began working from home, whether it was because of childcare issues or being an at-risk population, based on the information that we knew at the time, as well as if, if somebody were to contract COVID or a family member that they needed to care for. That policy, I think, ended up changing three different times since we have implemented it, just based on different matters that came up through this whole process. Because as you're all aware, this process is changing on a daily basis. Especially given the Governor's announcement today to kind of scale something that. So on June 6th, though, the Governor did allow Clatsop County to enter into Phase 2, which meant that more businesses were allowed to reopen. And so during that time, we as an employer started discussing the reopening of our county facilities and what that will look like. And we have, you know, we started this on June 6th and here we are on July 22nd. And our county's facilities are still technically closed, but we're providing services by appointment or if people still walk in. Because we've been trying to take a very methodical approach, as I said in the beginning, we want our employees to feel safe and we want the public to also feel safe when they come in to do business. So during this time, we've been implementing a lot of things. The Board in the 2019-20 budget process approved a secure barrier to be set up in the assessment and packaging process. Provided a barrier between the public and the employees, providing them services. So that's a nice barrier now that when we do open up to the public, that's less direct contact. But we have other departments that we're also doing things that were not planned, that's down in our Community Development Department. We are working with buildings and grounds to install plexiglass barriers there. We're also doing things, while they're hard to come by, we're trying to purchase touchless sink faucets so that way that there's just less interaction of touching the different things. We also have some foot holes on doors so that way you don't have to use door handles, you can just pull the door open with your foot. So we're just trying to implement a lot of different ways to try and make it a change. I'm not sure who's talking, but I'll keep going anyway. So anyways, some of the things that we have been doing with our staff is we've been having regular meetings with our department heads. And, and then we've also begun having all-staff meetings virtually, so that way if employees do have concerns, they can have them addressed through the public health staff or through the county management staff to try and get them answered. So for the Governor, these coverings are required to be worn indoors and in, in the place of business. If you're not able to maintain that six feet or if like you're in your own office space, you can take it off at that time. But, but we do have a mask wearing policy in place. We're continuing to encourage employees to regularly wash your hands, avoid touching your face, nose, eyes, mouth. If you're sick, stay home. And we're also just kind of implementing all staff, all hands on deck, wiping down public spaces. If you work in a department that has regular counter activity when we reopen, you know, we, we expect that all departments are taking turns just kind of wiping down high-touch areas. And then also, we're just encouraging staff, you know, I know in my department, we regularly just have a wipe-all-wipe and wipe down the doorknobs and light switches as we're, as we're working in our offices.
I, I'm sorry, can someone, can, can everybody please mute their phones because it's really hard to distinguish? I see Matthew, I can hear Matthew now. Can Teresa do that or somebody?
I have everyone muted on my end. I don't know where the feedback's coming from.
When someone came, Matthew was unmuted.
If you are on a phone, you can also mute yourself by pushing star six. So I'll just go back to, we've just been working with the departments, getting feedback from their staff in regards to trying to find a, find, find concerns that employees might have regarding reopening to the public. And some of the things that we're trying to do based on that feedback is reduce the foot traffic that's coming into the building. So, you know, recently, these last few months, as I said, we're still providing the vital services that the, that the public needs. And we're just doing it in a different way. So a lot of departments have been doing this by scheduling virtual meetings. Some have been still able to meet in person, but just scheduling them through appointments. We have been, you know, some departments have had modified schedules to try and make it so that there is a smaller number of people within the workspace. And then doing a lot of stuff online. So we've gone to trying to make it so that a lot of our forms can be completed and submitted online. So we've just been trying to look at how we do business in a different way. And this is a result of the feedback from the departments and their employees. And so we do have another department head meeting tomorrow that will be discussing this further to see if there's any other information that they've received since our last department head meeting. And then we have another all-staff meeting scheduled for Friday, just to kind of again touch base, see where employees are at. I know that there has been a little bit of anxiousness in regards to the recent uptick in community spread. So we're just trying to do our best to try and provide the services that we're here to provide, but doing so in a safe environment that everybody feels comfortable working in. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have about this process or any feedback that you may have received from your constituents regarding the services that they've been receiving.
Commissioner Neveker?
How, how, what's the method that will be used to limit the number of people that can come into the building from the public?
So while we won't be necessarily limiting the direct number, we'll be trying to reduce the foot traffic. So for instance, the Planning and Community Development Department, they will be scheduling things by appointment only. And so, so will the Clerk's Office. Again, we have to provide these services, so if somebody walks in, they'll still provide the service to them. But, but we're, we're really trying to encourage and we're going to do a, a big community outreach through the website, through media, social media, print media, to try and get people to direct them to the, to the website to schedule these appointments. We are in the process of purchasing some scheduling software and we're going to be using it for those departments that are going to be scheduling online. It's going to be the same software for all departments, so that way when citizens are trying to, you know, schedule an appointment with the Clerk's Office and then they go to schedule something with the Planning Department, it's not two different softwares that they're trying to figure out how to use. It's the same software throughout the county. So, so we're, we're going to be trying to, to do things that way. We also feel that in some instances, the, the public is, is going to limit themselves as well. Since we have been closed, like I said, we still accept walk-ins, our doors are not locked, but we really don't have a large number of people trying to come in on a daily basis. So I think between our big push to try and do things through appointments and online and just the community's concerns themselves, the, the number of people is going to continue to remain low. We'll continue to also encourage, we have signage that we'll be putting out. So, you know, if there is an area where there's an opportunity for people to gather, there, there will be signage on the floor so that social distancing measures are in place.
Thank you very much, Assistant County Manager Steele. We are, we are at the end of a time allotted for this, so I would suggest if Commissioners have any further questions or comments, please contact her directly. And let's move on now to the Clatsop County facility, no, I'm sorry, the Public Works Resiliency Project. Who will be giving us a staff report on that?
That's me.
Okay, welcome back.
Thanks. So as you're all aware, Clatsop County plays a critical role in countywide emergency preparedness, response, and recovery. And so when a natural disaster occurs, it's the county's responsibility to protect and preserve life and property and coordinate the longer-term rebuilding and recovery effort. And so in anticipation of a catastrophic, catastrophic event, the county's Commissioners have prioritized the relocation of essential county buildings and infrastructure outside of the tsunami inundation zone. And one of those facilities that is currently in the inundation zone that we're looking to relocate is the Public Works Facility. In conjunction with evaluating the options and facility, feasibility of relocating the Public Works Facility, we've also been evaluating alternative travel routes so that when we're trying to move people, equipment, and supplies in the event of a disaster, we, we have, we have roads that we're going to be able to do this on. And this is, this isn't a new topic. This is something that has been in the county's 2012 strategic plan. It's identified and the project is named the Countywide Bypass Truck Evacuation Route. And in the description of it, it states that the counties, cities of Astoria, Warrenton, and Seaside have considered improvements to Highway 101 and the development of an alternate route, earthquake or tsunami evacuation road or bypass. And so as mentioned in the 2015 TSP, having redundant transportation routes increases the likelihood of maintaining system connectivity during and after an event and is therefore an important part of Clatsop County's overall resilience. And so we've been trying to figure out what is the best approach to do this. And so we have a team of county staff, myself included, as well as our Public Works Director Ted McLean, Assistant Public Works Director Terry Hendricks, and County Engineer Dean, and I'm probably going to murder his last name here and then. And then we also have Gail Hendrickson and then our, from the Community Development Director. And then we also have our intern from Clatsop Works, Hannah Mather, who is helping with the community outreach and the, the PR piece of it. And so we've been working on this, you know, we came to the Board, it was before Dawn was here, so well over a year ago, to talk about the opportunity to try and look for potential sites to relocate the Public Works Facility as well as alternate lifeline routes. And so through that process, we've identified potential properties. And then trying to figure out whether or not these properties are viable for us required us to then go and start the negotiation process. So several months back, we went out for an RFP and then we hired the realtor firm of Pushman and Wakefield. And so we've been working with them to try and help us not only look at properties for the Public Works Facility and alternate lifeline routes, but also to help us market the North Coast Business Park as well as try and keep an eye out for other facilities that might be able to be relocated out of the inundation zone while at the same time helping us with the problem that we're having in regards to a growing number of employees with not enough space in the buildings that we have. So, so this has all been stuff that we've been working on for over the past year. And then as things develop, we bring on different people to help us through this process. So through this process, we have entered into what's called a letter of intent. And this is just starting the process to figure out, okay, is this a viable option? And is this party interested in selling to the county so that we can see if this is a feasible thing? So we've entered into some letters of intent. And then what happens from there is we then, we then would enter into what's called a purchase-sale agreement. The letter of intent is just saying, okay, we agree on these terms, now we're going to go ahead and enter into a purchase and sale agreement. And in all of these purchase and sale agreements, we have at a minimum 180 days to do our due diligence process. Because while we've identified these properties as being potentially feasible to do the project, it doesn't mean that in the end it is going to be feasible. And whether that's because the property has environmental hazards that we don't want to take on, whether it's because from community feedback, it's determined that this isn't a viable project or it's not necessary. Or if we just end up realizing that, you know what? This, this building isn't going to work on this property in this location or, or this lifeline route isn't going to be able to be accessible the way that we need it to be accessible. So we have 180 days to do this due diligence before, before we buy anything. But first, we have to enter into that agreement, so that way the work that we're doing is able to be determined. Because we don't want to start the process, get the work done, and then realize that we can't even buy this property. One of the other things that we have to do for, for this, for this project is what's called a goal exception. And so during this due diligence process, we have to find out if we can be granted a goal exception to move forward with this project. So the other piece of this is the public communication and outreach piece of it. And so what Hannah has brought up on the screen there for all of you to see is the county website. And so we're going to be going through a process during all of this to try and gauge community interests and get their feedback on the project. So if you go to the county website and then So if you go to the county website, and then once you're in there, you go under Departments, and then select Public Works. And then once you've selected Public Works, it'll pop up the Public Works tab. And you'll go to the tab that says Project, or sorry, the Resiliency Project. And then there are, there are some tabs underneath that as well. And so if you click on, go ahead and click on the background, Hannah. So if you click on the Background tab, then it's going to kind of bring up all of the information regarding this project, when it started, the steps that we've taken and gone through, what some of the terms mean. And then there's also the Timeline tab. And that kind of talks to when we see this project happening. And so you'll see that there are phases, there's years, and then there's also phases. And so if you click on the Map tab, that's going to provide you with what these phases coincide with. And so for instance, Phase 1 would be the relocation of the Public Works Facility. And per the, per the timeline, that, that project is going to take at least three to four years before it builds. And that's going to be the focus in the beginning to get that building, get the due diligence process done, get the building started, and, and then get the Public Works Facility relocated. There's also going to be, which isn't up and running yet, but we're going to be sending out information to all Clasip County citizens. And it's going to be a letter just kind of explaining what it is that we're looking to do. And there's going to be a questionnaire associated with it to, to get feedback in regards to what is the public looking for? Is the public interested in, in these types of projects? What's the level of interest? And, and if so, is it, you know, is it a high level of interest? Or is it, we think that there's better things that the county can be doing? And then we're also going to be starting to have community meetings. They're going to be a little bit more difficult to do, given the current environment that we're in. But our first meeting is planned for Thursday, August 13. And this information will be in the letter that goes out to everybody. And it'll have a link because it will be a virtual meeting. We do want to have in-person meetings, and so we'll be planning those as well. They're just going to be a little bit more complicated because we're going to have to do it on an RSVP basis. So that way, we can make sure that we're not having too many people in the location that we're holding the meeting. And we are planning to hold those meetings throughout the county. So that way, we're meeting people down in South County, we're meeting people in East County, we're, we're meeting people in, in the different areas, and hopefully in venues large enough to be able to have good participation and discussion. And so that's kind of where we're at with the process, but I'm open to any questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, ma'am. I really appreciate the good, hard work that staff has been doing. From my point of view as a commissioner, the public process is really well begun because I've been getting a lot of emails, I've been getting a lot of phone calls from people who are rightfully concerned about what's going to happen with their home. So I appreciate that you've laid out a background to give information, and you've laid out a structured way to proceed. I think all that's valuable. I've asked everyone who's spoken with me to trust us because there's a great deal of fear that what will happen will be a superhighway bypass going through their neighborhood that will result in the degradation of the quality of life there, that will see basically creation of a strip mall scenario instead of a neighborhood. And so I know going forward, you're going to hear a lot more from them. But, you know, we're committed to neighborhood livability as well as public safety. So I appreciate that, in my mind at least, you're holding those items in balance. I promise that what we're going to do is to proceed legally and ethically in a way that's fiscally prudent, and really to honor the trust they have in us and in you. So thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And that's all going to be stuff that we hope to get feedback from when we go through this process. Because what is this going to look like? I, I've also heard a lot of people concerned about the term bypass. And, you know, what is this? Is it just going to be a road that is, is a locked gate? Well, that's something that we have to explore, and County Council is working on in regards to being able to have a county road that is a locked gate. And then is it just going to be a, you know, a, a road that is, is paved, but not to any major standards? We, we're, we're trying to work through all of that to see what it is, what it is the public is looking for. And it might be that the road isn't even a feasible project, or certain parts of the road aren't feasible projects. But that's the feedback that we're, we're going to work on so that way we can figure out how to move forward during this next 180 days.
Thank you. I am delighted. I just wanted to say I'm delighted that Public Works is going to be out of the inundation zone. I think that's vitally important, no matter what, going forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We, we need to move the meeting along. I, I sense that this is going to be an ongoing topic, and we will revisit again soon. So the next, the next item is dissolution of the Skiponon Water Control District.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Dawn. Just really quickly, and Joanna will also help me with your questions. But since I came on, this has been, I think, one of the, one of the early meetings that I had when I came 10 months ago was about Skiponon Water Control District. And so it's been something on my, on my radar screen, and it's something that has come to more urgency recently as the Skiponon Board no longer has a quorum. And so Joanna has, has been working with the remainder of the Skiponon Board to kind of walk through what the dissolution process is, what would happen to the assets in that case. And we've also had brief conversations with the city of Warrenton because they will also be impacted by the dissolution. So some of the assets are within Warrenton's jurisdictional boundaries. So basically, this is a water control district. It has two major assets, one's in Colby Lake, and the other is the 8th Street Dam. Colby Lake would be a county asset, and the 8th Street Dam would be a city of Warrenton asset. They are a liquid entity still. They have about $40,000 to $50,000 in the bank, which that, that would also be distributed as well to help maintain these assets moving forward. So, so we just wanted to make sure this is on everyone's radar screen. There is a, a, a decision that the board will have to make regarding whether or not this goes to the ballot, the actual dissolution question goes to the ballot. And I will let Joanna address that portion of it.
I provided you all the background and kind of the steps that we look at when we're analyzing how to dissolve a special district. And so you'll see the, the email from me to the board members describing what the steps are. Just to, to kind of give you where we're at in the process, the Skiponon Board made itself, made its way through Step 1, which is the initiation of dissolution. They also made it through Step 2, which is proposing a plan. But before they got to Step 3, which is calling for an election, we, they had a board member who resigned, and therefore they did not. They no longer had a quorum, and they were a five-member board. So they went from three members down to two. So they're, they are no longer able to call for an election. So the question for you to be decided at a future board meeting is whether to waive that election process. You can do so if they have regularly failed to elect district board members. And I think we definitely could make the case that they have failed to regularly elect board members. They had one board member who resigned 18 months ago. Another board member resigned six months ago. And as the Agenda Report states, Tessa Scheller resigned in June. So if that's the direction the board wishes to go, that's certainly something that will be brought up at a future board meeting. After a decision is made about the election, if you choose to dispense with the election, we would immediately go to Step 5, which is winding up the district business affairs. And so we would be then bringing back another action for the board to basically wind up the business. And really, it's set up by statute, so we really have to follow what the statute says. And as County Manager Boons mentioned, the Colby assets would go to the county, the 8th Street Dam would go to Warrenton. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Joanna. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Thanks, Madam Chair. County Council, I've never contemplated anything like this before. So I'm really, it's all-new territory to me. And I appreciate that you sent this email. I'm puzzling about precedent. And I know that there was a lot of consternation in Warrenton about that dam. And I don't know if there are implications. I don't want anybody to get tripped up on this. So, so I don't, I don't know that now is the time to discuss all this, but I don't know when else either, so help me, please.
So, so I will note that we reached out to the city of Warrenton and notified the city manager that this process was, was starting. I have not talked to the city attorney yet for the city of Warrenton, although I understand that he will be calling me soon. But it, it really unfortunately is a matter of what the statute says and how the assets are distributed. So in the unincorporated areas, assets would then go to the county. In the incorporated areas where assets are located, it would go to any of the cities that it's located in. And because this special district sits both in unincorporated areas and incorporated areas, that's how the statute says that the assets will be distributed.
Well, thank you for that response. The thing that concerns me is I don't have a fiscal impact statement to, to refer to. So that would say, that would guide me. An election costs $500. It is public resources. If we give it to Warrenton, or if we keep something for ourselves, I don't know what else we would do. But I still think a fiscal impact statement would be useful, and hearing from the city of Warrenton would be useful.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. County managers?
Yeah, if I could, real quick, we will schedule another work session, just to follow up on this. We'll give you some more financial in, information that Commissioner Thompson noted. And we will invite Warrenton to also join us after we speak with them and work through all the details of the dissolution before we actually do it. So this was more just make sure it's on your radar screen, so.
Thank you, County Manager. I, I think I jumped the gun on the last item. So it looks like we are at the end of our, our items for our work session. But does anybody have a question that they just really would like to ask before we end this up? Commissioner Nebiker?
I couldn't read, you know, on the screen any of the background information, Monica, or... And I'm assuming that what is included is what the county went through with the 2007 straight-wind FEMA-declared disaster, and how important the county Public Works were to the county residents. Because that, they weren't in danger of being lost, but in the tsunami, it would be. And so I'm just hoping that that reminder for people to understand how important it is that the Public Works move and anything from the county that's possible to move out of the inundation zone could be included if it isn't already.
We didn't specifically include anything about the 2007 storm, but we can, we can just kind of provide examples in addition. This is, this is just the beginning piece of it. And so we're, this is, this link is going to be available the whole time. So as we progress through this process, it's our plan to continuously update this link and provide updated information. And so while there's information there now, we can definitely add more information in regards to situations where we have run into not being able to get to certain areas. And, and I know that there's some parts specifically associated with the main line that have been topics of conversation. But part of the transportation plan also includes the east side of the county in regards to connecting off of 202 up over the hill to get to Highway 30 coming out near the Napa-Swinson Junction there. And so, so this is looking at not just one specific area, but the county as a whole, and being able to, to get to those different parts of the county.
Thank you. I was just thinking that the 2007 storm might be fresh in some people's minds. Thank you.
Yeah, we can definitely take some examples of, of different scenarios that we've been in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we take a pause between meetings? Okay, what I suggest is you make sure you mute it and shut your video down, and then we will reassemble at 6:00. Thank you, everyone, for all your input on this, a lot of big topics today. So, thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it is 6 o'clock on July 22nd, and we are starting a, our Board of, Clasip County Board of Commissioners meeting. First, I would like to welcome everyone, and then tell everyone that please mute your phone or computer until you are called on. The Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clasip County, all county service districts for which this body so adds, and as the Clasip County Local Contract Review Board, is now meeting in regular session. May we have, County Clerk, may we have the clerk of the board? May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Nebiker? Here. Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Quila?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Here. So we have, everyone is here tonight. And let's move on to the agenda approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, yes, I, I would ask that under the consent calendar, the Arts Council new mission statement be remanded back to the Arts Council. Do we need a motion for that, or just, yeah?
I think you would need to make a motion to have it taken, taken off the agenda.
Okay, I'll do that. I would move that the board remove Item 5 under the consent calendar and remand it back to the Arts Council.
Commissioner Thompson? Do we have a second? Commissioner Thompson, thank you, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Let's see, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Webb, Commissioner Nebiker. Commissioner Quila, how do you feel about removing that from the agenda?
I think he's frozen.
I think he's frozen, frozen in time. And I, I would approve it. So Commissioner Quila, are you back with us? And I would approve it. So Commissioner Quila, are you back with us? I think he's still, so it's four to, five to zero. It's unanimous that we're moving that off. Thank you, Commissioner Quila. And so we have that removed off the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda, so the now amended agenda?
Commissioner Thompson moves to adopt the amended agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you, a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Again, we have four and a frozen, and a five. So it's five to zero. So that, that the agenda has been passed unanimously. Let's now move on to the business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda except a public hearing or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. The county clerk, I'm sorry, the Clerk of the Board, are there any written comments that were sent in from the public?
No, there were not.
Thank you. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
No, they were not.
Okay. Do we have any, do we, do we? I see, I see our, okay. If you ever, if you're right, so we don't have anyone who's registered to speak. So let's move on to the consent calendar. May we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Seconds.
All right, any discussion? Okay, please raise your hand if you approve of the consent calendar, this motion. So I see of Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Webb, Commissioner Nebiker, Commissioner Quila, and myself all approve this consent calendar. So let's, thank you, that passes unanimously. Let's, let's move on to the Commissioners Liaison Reports. Who would like to start today? Mark, are you frozen or did you want, are you volunteering to start? I think he's having technical difficulties. Commissioner Quila, would you like to go? I see his microphone is green, but that's the extent of it. Okay. Who, who else would like to go? Commissioner Thompson?
I think we need broadband, Madam Chair. It's a good thing we're working on that, eh?
I certainly would agree, yes.
Senator Roblin recommended that somebody who was interested in broadband should attend the meetings of the Oregon Broadband Advisory Council. So that's tomorrow from 9:15 to 12:30. If anybody else is interested, you can let me know, but I'm going to be on that meeting. We'll, we'll see. I've stayed in touch with people about broadband. Today was the CCO Risk Share Board Meeting. If I have your permission, I can go into a little more detail. This is a very important body. I remind you that they have $1.6 million to spend on savings because they've used their skills to produce healthcare services efficiently in Clatso County. They will, though, suffer a 4.4% rate decrease retroactive to January 2020, which will result in $7.6 million less for them from the 2020 rates. 2021 rates may see further decreases. All of this is due to the decline in state revenue. COVID has real immediate and lasting effects. There was some recommendation from the fiscal people associated with the CCO that Clatso County's group stashed some cash, as they put it. They are going to consult with actuaries. They have Wakely, an actuarial firm from the east coast, who also works for the Oregon Health Authority as their advisors. Care Oregon has actuaries on staff. And Care Oregon has a staffer, Emily Canales, who looks at qualitative analysis, not just the numbers. This group is looking for investment strategies in areas of housing, broadband, and childcare. All three are of vital interest to all of us and everybody in this community. They're looking at using whatever remains of that $1.6 million to create impact funds in these areas. Housing, broadband, and childcare again. So they've, they have this structure where they have particular roles. One is convener, two is leader, three is participant, and four is investor. In terms of housing, Leslie Ford, who's an executive, I understand, from the county manager with Care Oregon, she's leading that subcommittee. They are focusing on three areas: bricks and sticks, houselessness, and supportive services. You'll remember that the state funding authority also works on those areas as well. So, so they're talking about that. In terms of who should be the convener for all three areas for these investment strategies, that's probably Care Oregon or the CCO group. In terms of who should, who should lead this? For housing, they'll probably keep that to themselves. I'm not sure on that. In terms of broadband, I may bold to suggest that Clatso County Board and Staff, since we're working together on this with our stakeholders and providers, would do well to be the community leaders, and they're considering that. Again, we don't have a seat on that board, so we don't have a vote. We do have a voice, and they've been kind enough to invite me and to listen to what I've said, I think. They're looking at a project, an antenna system with, at a cost of perhaps $100,000 that would benefit rural Clatso County residents. But they're working at it from a medical point of view. So.
Can I ask you a question? Did you just say tannif system? Tannif.
And, and tanna, watch my lips.
Oh.
Tanna system, sorry. Tannif is something else again.
That's right, that's why I didn't quite, okay, thank, thank you.
I will try and speak more distinctly. So, an antenna system. I suggested that the county was the logical leader in this because we're already working. And, and what we could do would be to be the leaders and develop public-private partnerships. And so they had some, they seemed amenable to that. We'll see how they, how they vote. In terms of childcare, I've been working with Eva Manderson to reactivate that, to get that going again. And so we're going to have a meeting next week with Jennifer Purcell, Eva Manderson from the Early Learning Hub, myself, and Commissioner Bangs. What I'm trying to do is to have that seamless transition to a new board. So we're collaborating, making full use of the sitting commissioners, but also finding a way to develop positive working relationships with the new commissioners coming on board. The, the childcare task force is a logical umbrella structure. If, if the convener of the childcare was the early learning hub, that would be logical. They could leave, we participate, we get, so, so it all works. But they get to decide where the money goes. On the other hand, they have money, and they're thinking about how to spend it in areas that matter to us. I wanted to say just one final thing about the Board of Forestry meeting. I, I still have my, my pet project that we do, mass timber-related modular housing. I don't know if it'll ever happen, but you know, it's a good dream to have. And so Brian Pugh and I had a short, good conversation about developing a team to work on that. Because what we're looking at is to add value to Oregon products. Instead of shipping out raw materials, the way a colony would, we're looking at creating value-added forest products that would make better use of our natural resources, build our community's tax base, and provide good jobs as well as housing. So I continue to talk to people about that. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Who would like to go next? It looks like it's going to be Commissioner Webb.
Um, who is Commissioner Bangs? Is that somebody from?
It's Commissioner-elect. She's not a commissioner yet.
Oh, oh, oh. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I will try to speak more distinctly, sorry. Commissioner Bangs.
Well, I think I heard it. I just didn't, didn't make any sense to me. The, my, my biggest recent webinar was Representative Bonamichi's webinar on childcare, which was, as always with hers, very informative. She had a number of folks there from different organizations who were, who were champions of childcare. I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding what role the county can play in childcare. So I'm really looking forward, maybe from Commissioner Thompson, to hear more about exactly what that would look like. My other thing is that in regard to the CCO, I wish, I'm wondering, Mr. County Manager, if, if we could ask them to come to us a bit more often with, with, to tell us a little bit more about what they do. They have a heck of a lot of money. And to my knowledge, we don't actually have a delegate to the CCO, do we? We don't have, you know, I mean, Commissioner Thompson has been nice enough to just kind of track along with them. You know, we, we asked them to come meet with us a year or so ago, and they sent, I'm sorry, but Mimi Haley didn't even show up, and they sent a junior member. I, I would just like to see, if the CCO is going to start talking about issues like housing that, that relate to services that, in fact, sometimes we provide, I would like to see a much closer collaboration with them. Is it possible for us to make an overture, perhaps? To ask them if we could maybe have a commissioner on their board? Or, or at a minimum, to talk to us a little bit more about, about, you know, when they came to us with the, I can't remember what it was called, but it was a, basically a health assessment that they did a year or so ago. It was informative, but it, you know, there was, there wasn't very much new in it. We knew pretty much, you know, what the circumstances are in our, in our county. So I just, I mean, how do we, does anybody else agree with me?
I think, Commissioner Webb, I think that's, those are good questions. They're very important to our community. And I think perhaps we can kind of check out behind the scenes and see what, what our options would be and then come back to the board. But I, I think it, in, in regards to housing and childcare and broadband, it may sound cliche, but we are going to need community partners left and right. So the more collaboration we have with all these different agencies, the better.
That's right. I completely agree. I'm just asking for a little bit more of a liaison type of communication with the CCO. They have money.
We'll, we'll, we'll check into that. Thank you. Who else would like to go next? Commissioner Quila or Commissioner, Commissioner Nebiker has got her hand up. So go ahead.
Wrong button. Thank you. So I, I attended the virtual town hall meeting with Suzanne Bonamichi. And I'm, I'm really glad that she has been in office as long as she has because, well, I like her, but also as she is in there longer, she'll have more, more sway. And I think she represents some good values for our county. I also watched the press conference with the governor today. And Chair Sullivan, thank you for letting us know about that. The governor, I know the governor is kind of typed as being cautious, but I think in light of the pandemic, it has proved very well. I think she has done very well for Oregon. And I also was glad that someone from the press asked about what's happening in Portland and what she thought about that. And like her and so many others, I am very, very concerned about this. You know, as commissioners, we take an oath to uphold the Constitution. And I am, I am very concerned about this because I think if we're not already, we will be soon in a constitutional crisis based on these homeland security troops coming into our state. My son, who lives in Portland, went and observed. He sent a picture of one of those men on the Hatfield Building with a rifle aimed at the crowd. As you may know, the wall of moms were tear-gassed. They are using methods that are, I mean, they don't care what we want, what the, our local governments want. It's very disturbing. And now we know that, we have heard that they will be sent to other cities. And as our president has said, the Democrat cities should be democratic cities, I guess. But anyway, I just wanted to say that it's, I know that there are people who are more concerned about the destruction of property. But I don't know that they realize what, what this is doing and what this could potentially bring about. And of course, we know that, like the governor said, it's like throwing gasoline on a fire. And there's more and more people now coming from outside our areas or outside the state to support the people in Portland. It's a very worrisome situation. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. It is, it is very worrying. Commissioner Quila, would you like to go next? You're getting close. Got the green microphone. You got some motion. Almost there. Darn.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
I'd just like to add one thing. So my grandson, who is in the NBA bubble in Orlando, all those people who are there, no one has tested positive. That's in Florida. And it's because of the methods that they are using. It's very strict. But they are being very successful so far. And when you think about how many people are there, all those players who were, well, anyway, I, I think that's, that shows what can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Quila, I don't want to not hear from you this meeting. So perhaps, I'm assuming you're on the computer. And if you would like to call in, sometimes I've had luck with calling in, but I, I don't know. Do you want to give it a try again? So I, I take it you can hear us, but we're not able to hear you. Okay. We, we will try back later. Okay, for myself, I attended the Board of Forestry meeting today for parts of it. And I, I also wanted to start out with thanking Commissioner Quayle and Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner, I don't know, was Commissioner Webb on that? No, I don't think so. And County Commissioner-elect Bangs that participated with the public hearing on, not the public hearing, but the public presentation on the Habitat Conservation Plan. This has been a ongoing project that's been going on for two years, and it is coming forward into October. And I have talked to the county manager. I would like to get this topic on a work session so we can talk more about it. Today I did speak during the FTLAC comments period as the Commissioner Stoughton from Washington County. Commissioner Yamamoto did not speak today. And I made it very clear that I was speaking for, as an individual commissioner. And I stated my support of the Habitat Conservation Plan. And I also stated my dismay at the lack of communication going on now with the Forest Trust Advisory Committee Counties. They have canceled meetings without consultation with class up and also have given testimony without consultation. So I'm concerned about that. And you, you all did, I believe, received a letter from State Forester Peter Doherty and Board of Forestry Chair Tom Imison, expressing the same concern. Because by statute, the FTLAC is to advise the Board of Forestry, and we are at a critical junction this year coming up with both the Forest Management Plan and the possibility of a Habitat Conservation Plan. So I think there's a, the, the presentation they gave to the board today was a similar, was the same one that they gave on the public hearing. I think there's some real good information out there. And there's a lot more conversation to be had. There's going to be another public hearing. I think it's in September, not hearing, but presentation in September 14th or 15th. I'm not sure on the date. And as well as they are encouraging all the commissioners in the Forest Trust Land, the 15 Forest Trust Land counties, to please submit their questions and concerns directly to them. I think that's important. This is, this is this is important for our state, and it's important that our decision makers give their thoughts and input on that. So, and I will forward you the comments that I, that I made. And I, I believe I was also on Congresswoman Bonamici's town hall too. And I'm, I'm always impressed with how well she does, no matter how tough the questions, she does a great job. So I see Mark is now off camera. If he comes back or finds another motive, conversation, we'll, we'll get him in. So let's go now to our county manager.
Chair Sullivan, members of the board. Chair Sullivan mentioned during the work session that, that there was an email that was sent from, from Teresa, but it was sharing information from Terry Moore from the Center for Public Service. And so just reminding the board that he's continuing to work on the process of the strategic plan, looking towards the third work session. And so he's hoping to talk with each of you one-on-one next week, just to talk about the values, mission, principal side of things, as well as talk about the focus group areas. So that's moving forward. The other that I just want to, to mention is to reiterate what Monica said during the, the work session about the public works resiliency project is that, you know, from staff's perspective, I just want to reiterate our commitment to community engagement and to community input. You know, we are going to have a transparent process. From staff's perspective, no decisions have been made. We really are approaching this in an objective way. So I just want to share that with the board and share it with anybody else who is listening. This is a public process. We're going to go through it together. And on the other side of it, the board will be making decisions, but there has been no decisions made. And so and then we do have auditors in, in the house. And so if you come up to the third floor and the second, the third and the fourth floor, probably, there's auditors here. It's the normal annual process. It's the preliminary field work, but they are working on the 1920 audit. And then finally, I just want to say that I appreciate the board members who have had the opportunity to talk to us about the website. You saw that Hannah has been doing a lot of work for us, and I want to thank Hannah for that. And thank Teresa for, and Tom. But we are making progress. And so the final thing that I want to, to just recognize, and I've said this a lot since March, is that, you know, COVID is something that has strained everybody, and it's strained staff from their experiences at work. It's, it's strained staff from their experiences with, you know, home, kids, aging parents, neighbors, you know, going to, to the grocery store has become stressful for some, putting off appointments has been, comes stressful for some. And so, you know, we're having an all-staff meeting Friday, and Monica went through all the work we've been doing on the reopening plan. But this is a layered and complex environment that we're currently in. And so my approach to when something's layered and complex is we communicate and we listen. And we communicate and we listen. And so that is the process that we're going through right now. And as we do that, we try to be supportive. So I'm just sharing that because we have a public health staff that's been working nonstop. We have staff in other deep departments that are working nonstop, and they're doing that on top of juggling all these other stressors. So my hat goes off to, to the county staff. So that's all for, for me.
Thank you, County Manager. I, I think we would all agree with you and, and put out our, our thanks to the staff also. I did have one question. Do the auditors have a special, like, kind of mask? I'm imagining something kind of fun. They go through the halls. Do they have something? Some, some sort of identifying thing? Ah, it's my strange brain. Okay. Let us go now to the business agenda. This is the adoption of the fiscal year 2020, 21 county budget. And I believe our Assistant County Manager Monica Steele will give the staff report.
Yes. So you've already adopted the budget, but when I was completing the resolution in order, I put the levy for bonded debt in the wrong column. On the resolution in order, when you are categorizing taxes, there's three different sections, general government, local option levy, and levy for bonded debt. And some of that is subject to the general government limitation, and some of that is excluded from the general government limitation. And, and I erroneously put them all as being subject to the general government limitation, and that is not correct. The levy for bonded debt needs to be excluded from that limitation. So nothing is changing in regards to the adopted budget. That is all saying exactly the same. We're just having you approve the corrected resolution in order to make that correction.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone, do, do any of the commissioners have a question? Okay, looks like Commissioner Thompson is ready to make a motion.
Madam Chair. Yes, we need to have a, we need to have an adopted budget. So I hope to adopt the budget as corrected by the Assistant County Manager. Is that sufficient? Or do you need more specificity? Because if you do, you better send me a hot email or say it yourself, and I will say what she said.
Well, I am, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
That was, that was submitted to us. I move that the board approve the resolution in order recategorizing the levy for bonded debt amount of $1,360,300 to be excluded from the general government limitation as presented and authorize the chair to sign it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Nebiker.
Well, I'd rather, I'd like to second that, please. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, Commissioner Thompson will let you second that. And any questions from the commissioners? Okay, clerk of the board, could you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Webb?
Aye.
Commissioner Nebiker?
Aye.
Commissioner Quayle?
Aye.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye. Okay, so the, the motion that the board approved the resolution in order recategorizing the levy for bonded debt amount of $1,360,300 to be excluded from the general government limitation as presented and, and, and to authorize the chair to sign is passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to go back to Commissioner Quayle. I think we have his sound now. Commissioner Quayle, would you, would you have anything you'd like to add to the, the board since we missed you in the commissioner comments?
No, I just think, I think my audio issues were God's way of saying that what I had to say wasn't that important. So I, I do want to, this, one thing I wanted to say is that I do get a lot of comments from the community about our health department, and it's specifically about what Dr. Heines is doing. She's all over the place, and she's doing so much with very little resources. And I also hear the same thing about our county manager, about how much they're doing in, in these really trying times. So I just want to make sure that, that everybody knows that and, and hears that back because it is, there, there is a lot of good feedback that I hear about what we're doing.
I think those are excellent comments. Thank you. Okay, so we, anyone else with good of the order? Okay, Commissioner Nebiker.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Oh. I've got two people. I'll come back to you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yeah, so the letter, going back to something that you had said, Chair Sullivan, so the letter that came from Kurt England. I, well, I don't know what ESA is, but I think that I support having a work session on the HCP for the commissioners. And I think that we really need to discuss the background, the history of this, even, you know, before some of the commissioners were on the board. I, anyway, I just want to say that, that I support that.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I'd like to second that very much. I, I think it would be very important for us to have, to have a, a work session if for information as much as anything else. I, I think that we have to be able to be well-informed to make, to make comments. And I would, I, I would really support that. The other thing I wanted to say, in my usual fashion, somewhere up in a cloud now. I'm sorry, I just forgot what I wanted to say. Sorry, it's been a long day. Long day. You're sorry.
Okay, we, we can come back to you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Nebiker, did you have another question, comment?
Yeah, I think that was a little disjointed, what I said. Because of the, it especially seemed irrelevant because of the letter that came from Kurt England that I think the public, I think that there might be some misunderstandings about this whole issue. And I think that, so having a public work session for the community to be able to hear would be helpful.
Thank you. And we're going to get to Commissioner Thompson. I just want to make a comment. There is a lot of information out there. You can go back and listen to the Board of Forestry meetings. You can go back and listen to the public presentations on the Habitat Conservation Plan. There's also written information on the, the Department of Oregon Forestry website. So if you are interested in, in learning, there is a lot out there. And I encourage people to do that. And we will, we will work towards finding a good time to have a work session. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with what's been said about having a work session and getting the background material. What strikes me about this topic every single time is the sharp divisions of opinion on what constitutes reality. So communication is the way to work through and to negotiate differences of opinion. So I hope that when we have this work session, we'll listen to a broad range, like, listen to every side of the picture, not just one, because I think that's essential. This community is divided, opinion is divided. Maybe we're the place where we can come together and negotiate some of the differences. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Anyone else? Okay, so we have, we, this board will be going into an executive session. And I am going to adjourn this, this, this public meeting, and then we will go into the executive, the executive session. So this meeting is now adjourned.